All right, good evening, everyone. I call this meeting the Santra City Council Order today, Tuesday, May 28th, and it's 7:14 PM with the clerk called Al Musa.
Councilman Al Musa?
Present.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes, ma'am.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes, present.
Councilman Hassan?
Present.
Councilman Sedman and Councilman Rafai are not present. We do have a call, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Rise, both members of the contingent. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, what it is, and that it is for all. Thank you. All right, do we have any community announcements?
Mr. Mayor, we have several listed here. If I may, the first one is volunteer and leadership appreciation. The city of Hamtramck had over 50 volunteers at six sites at the annual Clean Sweep event hosted by CED and the Befaction Commission. The event was published in the paper, and we posted flyers around the city as well as the high school. The event took place on April 20th, 2024. We'd like to say thank you to the team leaders and volunteers for the following sites: Tom Habitz, Max Gilginis, Alessandro Urbin-Rheinboldt, Tamid Ramen, Ruben Riggs-Hookman, and Lynn Blazi. Thank you all that participated, many, many more. Obviously, we can't read all the names off here. The next thing on here is on July 15th through 19th, Team Wellness Center will be out front of City Hall. There'll be a mobile screening truck during preventive health screening services. They're specifically screening for long-term, long COVID. You're able to make a preappointment or just do walk-ins. We're going to be actually blocking off the side of the park for semi with cat scans out there, so anyone interested can visit that. CED is actively looking to see if we're going to have some other volunteer organizations out there as well to join them. In addition, we have a Hindu event coming up, but I'm going to stay announcing that because I believe a couple of our councilmen want to announce that. We also have a representative in the audience for that.
All right, any more announcements? Okay. If we move to the proclamations, recognitions, and presentations, seems like we don't have any additions or additions to the agenda?
Yes, we have.
Councilman Musa, go ahead.
Yes, I have to move a resolution, in resolution 2024-48. We're going to table it for the next meeting. We have to make discussion next time.
Wait, resolution 2024-54?
Forty-eight.
Forty-eight?
Yes.
Better E?
No, for the consensus agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, for the consensus agenda, yes.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Hassan?
I think it's the, we all understand, he, he'd like to remove from the agenda today and try to bring it next council meeting.
Yeah.
Second.
All in favor? No objections? So, so resolution 2024-48 will be tabled for the next meeting, and until far the discussion will be organized as being held.
Yes.
All right, so...
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make the motion to approve the agenda, a resolution, I mean, agenda as amended.
Like second? All in favor?
Yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so the consent agenda has been amended. Before we get there, we have the public comments.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, we have Matthew Clark from Berkeley, Michigan. Welcome, Matthew.
Yes, if you can just push the button on the microphone. We have three minutes.
Thank you. Good evening, the City Council and the city. I'm here to talk today about the Palestine Boycott, Divestment, and Sanctions Resolution. I am a member, a longtime member of JVP, which is Jewish Voice for Peace, the largest Jewish Palestine solidarity organization in the world. We stand for freedom and justice for the Palestinian people, and we oppose the horrific genocide going on right now in Gaza. We're an organization, a Jewish organization that supports the boycott, divestment, sanctions movement, which is a Palestinian call, Palestinian-led movement, calling upon international civil society to, that includes governments, organizations, all people are conscious, to engage in boycotts and divestment of companies that are complicit with the crimes of Israel. And this movement calls upon boycotting of specifically named companies in an attempt to put pressure on them to comply with international standards of human rights and to put pressure on Israel to comply with international standards of human rights in its treatment of the Palestinian people. And the first thing I want to do is, I want to thank the City Council. I want to thank the city administration, the manager, and the city attorney for being very receptive to the work that we've been doing from the very beginning. Bill Meyer, I want to thank him as well, as in the audience, has helped to make this resolution possible and to put it on the agenda today. The city of Hamtramck was one of the first cities to pass a resolution in support of the ceasefire in Gaza, which is amazing and extremely appreciated. The city of Hamtramck became the first city in the U.S. to pass a move-your-money resolution, pledging or demanding that the federal government move funds from war to the cities and to people who need it away from overseas wars. We hope tonight that Hamtramck will become the first city in the country to pass a BDS resolution in support of the boycott, divestment, and sanctions movement. There are two other cities in the country that have made efforts and passed divestment resolutions that apply to select companies that are targets of the BDS movement, but Hamtramck would be the first city in the country to pledge to stop investment and procurement with all companies that are targeted by the boycott, divestment movement. That includes companies, for example, like Hewlett-Packard, Siemens, that German engineering company, companies that often do business with municipalities. It'd be very easy for the city to pledge to work with companies that simply comply with standards of human rights. And I also want to make clear, of course, because this tends to come up, that supporting Palestine and the Palestinian people right now is, of course, not antisemitic. I'm a Jewish person, and I stand with the Palestinian people against the genocide going on. I oppose genocide because I'm Jewish, because my people have suffered the Holocaust and horrific genocide. For that reason, I say never again to anybody, especially for the Palestinian people.
Thank you, Matthew.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. I have Mr. Bill Meyer.
Okay, well, first I'd like to welcome our new chief of police. I think it's his first council meeting. Welcome. So glad to have you here. And out of respect, I'm keeping my hat on for my Palestinians. So I'm Bill Meyer, Chair of the One Hamtramck, and also Chair of Michigan Peace Council, and former member and founder of the Detroit Chapter of Jewish Voice for Peace. Dear Council and Mayor, thanks for all your sometimes tedious work that you do for the city, important, necessary work, keeping our city running and keeping the residents happy. Thank you so much for that. Tonight, there's a special resolution dealing with a world issue that affects us more directly than most people know. Watching a genocide happen before our very eyes while knowing our tax dollars that should be used for us to help pay our issues is instead being used to help pay for massacres. It's unconscionable. This weekend alone, Israel used US bombs to kill 45 people in a refugee camp, adding to the over 36,000 people killed and millions more injured and displaced. Supporting wars that kill people and destroy nations and countries has never been voted on by the people in this country. I want to thank our mayor and our city manager for putting this important resolution on the agenda, and hope that you all vote for it and spread this message to the world that we need to support, and are actively working to bring peace and justice to the Palestinian people and to the entire Middle East, who are all victims of this almost century-long, inhumane, illegal occupation of Palestine. This must end, and it will end soon. The world is waking up and catching on to what's going on. This past weekend, there was an incredible People's Conference for Palestine. In Detroit, were over 3,500 dedicated activists attended. There were powerful suggestions offered on how to help Palestinians and bring them into this crisis in the Middle East. There's been, a long been a call to endorse the Palestinian people's nonviolent BDS campaign, which was developed back in 2006. It's a method which has been used and proven to be one of the most effective means of ending the brutal racist apartheid regime in South Africa back in the 1980s. Hamtramck is, can I get an extra minute? Thank you. Hamtramck has been the vanguard of opposing injustice in wars around the world by being one of the first cities to vote for a ceasefire in Gaza, the first city to pass the move your money resolution, the first city to name a major street after Palestine, and now the opportunity to be the first American city to pass a resolution that would lead the way for others to join enforcing Israel's stop its brutal settler colonial apartheid project in Palestine, which is against all international law. Stopping the war in Gaza is an important and immediate need, and the call for Palestinian people to boycott, divest, and sanction Israel for its crimes against humanity is also critical. Israel has made every attempt to call any opponent of Zionism or the government of Israel antisemitic, and has always feared that the BDS movement would hurt their oppressive regime more than where it hurts most, and that's in the pocketbook. So I'm asking you to vote for this item, 2024-51, which is on the new business, calls for supporting the BDS campaign. Thank you so much for your support.
Thank you. Mark Correia from Memphis?
Mark Correia appearing on resolution 2024-51 to give comments. We realize and recognize that our taxpayer dollars have funded the ongoing assault of human rights of the Palestinian people. No longer in our name will these injustices be continued against Palestinian children, women, and innocent people, and murders. What concerns me over the last week, that 36, I believe, children burned to death, and the UN workers in their warehouses hear them screaming they couldn't help them. They died. They screamed for their parents, screamed they died. They couldn't save them. This has been going on for many years, the first defat in 1987. I was in law school 30, almost 35, 36 years ago, when we had the first defat, they started throwing rocks at Israeli soldiers to fight killings that were unjustified by the Israeli Defense Forces. This has gone on too long. What we are seeing now is a disclosure of wholesale disregard of human rights that should not be compromised. Two cities in the United States, Hayward and Richmond, California, have already passed BDS-related resolutions. In fact, the last was a few weeks ago in Richmond. We need to be the third. We need to be on the right side of history, not the wrong side. We need to assist the people in promoting justice for the Palestinian people and prevent their ongoing murders. This needs to stop. This needs to end, and we need to be the third city. If we do it, I can guarantee you one thing, this will make national news within a few days, worldwide news, because the first two cities did do so. So I urge you as Muslims, as Arabs, as Bengalis, to help the Palestinian people in their time of need. Thank you.
Thank you. That's all for public comment.
All right, thank you. Next, we move to the consent agenda, and we have approval of minutes from the April 23rd, 2024 regular city council meeting, B, approval of unvoiced register dating May 28, 2024, C, approval of pre-approved expenditure dating May 28, 2024, D, resolution 2024-47, approving street closure for Hamtramck High School Family Game Day, and then F, resolution, we took, we removed E, so F, resolution 2024-49, approving additional funds for LED service replacement on Kniff Avenue. Can I get a motion?
All motion.
Second. All in favor? Aye. No objections? Thank you. We move to the public hearing, and we have one item, resolution 2024-45B, approving second reading and public hearing of the amendment and proposed ordinance to Chapter 96 for closed vacant or abandoned property.
Over. Second.
Mr. Mayor, just to reiterate, this is just simply removing the lots from the vacant registration, as council had requested us to do so.
All right, do we have any...
Any public comments?
We're going to open it, didn't we?
It is open.
But it's open, okay.
No public comments.
All right, then we make the motion to close it?
We'd like to make a motion to close.
Motion.
Second.
All right, all right, and vote.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, would you like to vote?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
We, resolution 2024-45B approved.
Thank you. And we move to the new business. We have the first item, resolution 2024-58, approving first reading and setting date for second reading of public hearing of Hamtramck, 2024, 2025 general appropriations ordinance.
Motion, please.
Motion. Second.
Thank you.
Discussion?
You guys aren't very excited today about motioning. Usually, you're motioning before the resolution's done.
As yourself and the council know, we had the public hearings on this at, were in the past meetings. This is simply the first reading of the budget hearings. We anticipate the second hearing at the next meeting, and then hopefully we'll wrap up the budget.
All right, no more discussion? All right, we go ahead and vote, please.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-58 approved.
All right, thank you. Next one is resolution 2024-51, declaring support of the Palestinian boycott, divestment, sanctions movement.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you.
All right, discussion?
Mr. Chair? I think, thank you, you and city manager, to bring that up to a resolution and all the gentlemen, they're supporting the cause of what happened in the world right now. People, every angle of the world, they're hating the genocide that Israel is doing, and we cannot support them anymore. You know, with every angle, whatever we can, we need to support Palestinians to, you know, help them out, help them out, and this is clearly, we need to boycott to using their products. We cannot have our taxpayer money to use to kill people.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Chair?
Councilman Hassan?
I'd like to thank the organization and the people, and moreover, is the human who tried to brought this resolution into use to us. Thank you. Second, as a human, I'm supporting this resolution, not for, not as a Bengali or as a Muslim, no, as a human. As American, what we're doing, we are supporting the terrorist people to kill innocent kids. That's why I'm calling them terrorists. The definition terrorist is right there, and we are, as an American administration, we are supporting them to kill the kids, innocent people, and we cannot let the medicine, anything, any food, water, to go that specific area. So we, as an American administration, always been talking about the terrorism, and the other hand, we are supporting the terrorism, the shame for our whole administration. The thing, it will be end, no question about it. It will be end soon, or it will be end when no Israeli will exist in the world to kill the innocent people. Most of the Israelis will be the site of the Palestinians, and they will fight each other to destroy the, some of the terrorist Israelis. So as Americans, we have to be, think from now, what we're doing, again and again, that we, all Americans, as the country of immigrants, even the President Joe Biden, your generation came from somewhere else. In that case, we are same power in USA, and if you know the math, you know the math, the birth ratio, you think about it, after 50 years, who is going to control the United States? If you're not getting educated enough from today, I will make you educated after 50 years on what you need to do in the United States. Think about it, we killed millions innocent people in Iraq. Did not found one ounce, any chemical in the Iraq. We destroyed it, and we are sending billions of billions of dollar to rebuild it. First question, why you kill all of the innocent people? Same thing you're doing in Palestine. Stay away from that kind of situation and stop it as soon as possible, and not, you're going to learn, you're going to learn very soon, hard way, not the easy way. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Yes, Mr. Mark Correia?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I should have considered bringing this resolution into the agenda. We are making historical decision, hopefully, in the next few minutes. I thank you to all the students, Columbia University in California and all over the United States and all over the world, who are protesting Israeli and supporting the Palestinian people. They try to stop the genocide, they pressurize the whole community, our students, our teachers, and our government, who sadly, our country, nation in DC. They are very degenerate people, they are not coming at anybody's side, they know what's going on in the rest of the world, they know what we are doing as the American government. We are taking our citizens' tax money and sending to Israel, and those money using to killing the innocent people, especially kids and women, and this is fully genocide. We cannot go both, we have to stop this. We had an opportunity to stop this, bring the table. I hope Joe Biden, he's going to learn this, he has to learn, long time ago, but he has to learn again and again to stop those things, do a tremendous picture to, one of our, whole world will know the picture. Israeli Prime Minister, stop him to killing the genocide and stop the genocide. I hope we can pass this, pass this resolution, and we'll do everything possible to make Palestinians freedom and free from the Israeli genocide. I hope everybody, rest of the community, rest of the country, all the cities, and local government, state government, and federal government, they all come and help the whole community and help Palestinian people to stop the genocide. Thank you very much to listen to me and give me the opportunity.
Thank you, Mr. Mark Correia. Any more? So, thank you all, and thanks to the team that, well, the team who worked on this resolution to bring it. We had to edit it and modify it to be as clear and legal as possible, after consulting our attorney and other attorneys as well. So, thank you so much for working hard to support the Palestinian people. Apparently, most of the American people are against the war, but our government, of course, does not listen to the concerns of the people. It seems like we are ruled by a minority in this country, and that's, that's a problem. The voice of the people is not being heard. We elect people, but those people then get supported by some special interest group, and they don't express the opinion and the concern of the people, they rather work for the special interest groups, and that's why I said we are ruled by minority in this country. The American people had no say when it comes to policymaking. And so, after eight months or more of this war, and I call it global war on Gaza, which is very unethical, the global war, all the countries, including the neighboring countries, are violent to support the Israelis and to, you know, put a siege around Gaza. It's only the soil of this land that fights with the people. They are underground, and that's what keeps them alive. And so, why do they sacrifice so much? Because they believe this is their land, and they will die, they'll see their kids dying, but they will never give up on their cause. They're fighting for a good cause, and some people call them terrorists, which doesn't make no sense. We don't understand, we don't, we have experts on so many international issues, but they don't report the correct information to the policymakers in this country. And that's why after eight months, Israelis have not accomplished even one single goal of this war. They haven't bring back the hostages, they keep coming, and in fact, they lost more prisoners last week to, more Israeli soldiers were captured, and that's, and more rockets are being fired from Gaza to Tel Aviv, the capital of Israel, after eight months. So I think the only legal or ethical, the only ethical exit for the Israelis is to declare defeat and give up and accept the exchange of prisoners and leave the people, you know, live in their land. That's, if they are, if they want to withdraw with some, a little bit of moral, you know, defeat, and then they can, they can wipe out Gaza, but still, they have lost the war ethically, morally, and on the ground as well, but they still insist that they will continue, kill more innocent people, accomplish zero of their goals, which is very unethical, I keep calling it. So, thank you again for bringing this resolution, for discussing it, and I fully support it, and we can move and vote on this resolution.
Councilman El Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2024-51 approved.
Thank you. All right, thank you. The next one is our resolution 2024-52, approving site plan for expansion of Brothers Plaza at 11620 Joseph Campo Street.
Mr. Mayor, I have Austin from CED.
I'm sorry, I had an offer and I didn't hear it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I have Austin from CED to start us off, and then I also say that I have Mario here, who is, most of, actually, probably everyone in the room knows, that also owns Main Street and many other buildings from around town, and that I will state from experience that does a really nice job in maintaining his property, and I highly support any endeavors that him and his brother and his family does in our city. I have no doubt that this will be a really nice expansion.
The site plan is presented to you tonight for 11620 Joseph Campo. Bring three additional commercial units to Hamtramck Central Business District. The applicant, along with their architect, was very cooperative and patient during the site plan reprocess. They were willing to take feedback from CED and the city's planning contractor to find a site plan that was in compliance with the city's zoning ordinance, with only three site plan updates being required from the architect. The architect has been very innovative in the way he's designing the landscaping for this site, using flower beds that are at the same grade as the surrounding concrete, which will allow stormwater, instead of hitting our sewer system, go into these flower beds and helping decrease the chances of urban flooding during major rain events. There's also going to be a new screen wall built for their dumpster enclosure. This will improve the acid odor control in this area along Joseph Campo. Based upon the sound planning in Hamtramck zoning ordinance, CED Department recommends that site plan submitted for 11620 Joseph Campo dated April 25th, 2024 be approved by councils.
Thank you. Any other discussion on this?
Mr. Chair?
Yes? Yes, the Councilman.
Having twenty-two years in the main street, same respect, same customer service, more cleanup and that kinds of attitude owner has it. And, and we like to expand those kinds of attitude building business. And we really appreciate him he expanding his money in the Hamtramck City to rebuild and make nicer than before. Thank you, Mr. Mario, and thank you.
Thank you.
He's good in making money. Well, Mr. Mayor, we thank him to bring more business in Hamtramck. You can, you know, do get proper with things getting done. Hopefully, this is gonna set as an example for other business owners to modify their business and, you know, get things done properly and make more money and it's better for our city as well. Thank you. And we keep telling our city manager and, you know, every department to make things easy for our residents to invest and to bring more business to our city. That's our vision of the city and we would like to, there are more businesses on the way. And I also would like to remind, you know, our administration to help them as much as possible. You know, some people are asking to, you know, have an entrance and cut the curb so they can, you know, have a new business. So, we would like to speed up the process of assisting those investors. Some of them are from our city, some of them are from outside. So, we would like to bring more business to the city. So, more investment. So, please make it easy for them as long as there's nothing against our codes and ordinances. Thank you so much and we can go ahead and vote on this.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yes.
Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024 to approve.
Thank you. Next one is Resolution 2024-53, approving proposed contract extensions agreement with Priority Waste.
Motion.
Second.
Thank you, Chairman. I'm very.
Thank you. Mr. Mayor, I have John here to speak on this, just a few comments on it. We did go out to competitive bid on this. We had three companies indeed bid on it. Our current contractor, Priority Waste, did come in the lowest by far. I will say that in, in years past, there had been a few issues on it in, with Priority. Within the past year, year and a half, they have significantly stepped up their game, in my opinion. And I can say that with, with, you know, a lot of firsthand knowledge because I do, do, I do handle this firsthand. And John can certainly speak to that as well. They have, they definitely have proven to us that they want to keep our business. And they go above and beyond anytime we do call them when there is an issue at this point. We do have a representative from Priority with us today that is happy to speak to you if, if you wish to speak to them. And I'll let John elaborate on it from here.
Another positive with Priority is they have the yard here, Hamtramck and Christopher, where they have the drop-off dumpster for the residents to be able to use. They have to throw out different items and that's another big bonus for the residences here. And the pricing, it speaks for itself. I mean, they're three million, three hundred thousand less than the next closest bid. So, it's probably a savings for the city. Plus, we like to retrain another garbage truck company where the missed alleys are, the missed trash cans or side streets that are a problem. So, I would definitely recommend, you know, staying in Priority.
Thank you. So, any concern that I have been getting from our residents is about the pickup of large items. Like, I mean, there was some changes recently and people leave their items outside and it doesn't get picked up. So, some of them reach out to me and they keep asking what's the new policy? What should we do about this? Is there, I mean, is there any update about this? What's the situation?
There's really no change. I mean, it's always been one, one large item next to it that has been picked up. But, I mean, depending upon the circumstances, they're not gonna do like a clean out of a house, per se. But there are certain other variations. I'll, I'll let Priority answer this a little bit more clearly than me.
Good evening, Dan Denai with Priority. Nice to meet all of you tonight and thank you for the honor, for the opportunity for the extension. Bulk is, is a very difficult concept to grasp and really nail down to black and white, right? There's bulk that's like a mattress or a couch or a chair. And then there's bulk that I like to call like a hog pile or an eviction or a mess that piles outside of the house. And none of us want to deal with those situations. We don't want our employees to dig through those piles because we don't know what may lay underneath an item. But if a resident puts out a bulky item and that being a chair or a mattress, it should be picked up. If it's not being picked up, I know the city manager, John as well, will let us know if we missed it. Sometimes a resident calls prematurely where we bring a truck down. It may be full or it can't accommodate the bulk item at that moment, but their trash cart was already serviced and they let you know or let the city know and we may already be making ways back. So, how we do our bulk process currently is we wanna make sure we get the carted material off the ground first because that's gonna draw the most amount of the rodents or attractions from like cats and dogs and different things. So, we wanna get that out first. The bulk items, if we aren't able to get it at the moment that we're there getting the cart, we come back for it, whether it be with a pickup truck or a packer vehicle. That was a change that we instituted about a year and a half ago and it seemed to work out well. But again, Mr. Mayor, I'm sure residents see their cart serviced and see the bulk still there and think that there's a problem when we're working our way back to it or there was a road closure or something that's delaying it too. So, like I said, those are gray areas in between the white and black of picking it up and getting rid of it. But hopefully, you understand that our goal every week is to leave the streets cleaner than when we came. And I think in the last year and a half to two years, we've made that proactive step under, you know, a lot of the pressure that your administration has put on us, knowing that we can always get better.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
So, there was the law, one day, once a month, from the head. So, I agree with you. So, we have to, John have to make sure what he said and we are, they are doing that. And if it is eviction, it's a council. It cannot be the company. The house owner has to take care of that business, eviction. And rest of the thing, should not be any issue. Mattresses and the house, it should be picked up by the house company. Residents don't have enough time, enough money or anything to take them on himself to outside the city somewhere else. So, it is their responsibility. But it's not done as a city administration. We have to look for and we're to let them know. That's all.
If a resident said that they did not pick up the bulky items, couches, mattress, they have a need, they have to call them or call you, or they have to call the city?
Yeah, we would encourage all residents to call our office. I'll, I'll say our number now and then I'll repeat it later. We have two phone numbers, a local 586-228-1200 as well as a toll-free number, 855-927-8365. I'll repeat it again, 586-228-1200 and then 855-927-8365. One thing that I like to brag about is that our call hold times and our call resolution times. I, I don't mind people calling the city manager and others, but I, I think that they would prefer it come to us. We have a hold time of 20 seconds. So, from the time in which they make the call to get to receptionist is 20 seconds and that's an average over a month span. Then a resolution time for under two and a half minutes. And we have multilingual individuals at our office that can handle languages. Now, I can't say that they'll know all of them, but they might be able to assist in other ways. As I know, there's a very diverse community with many languages that may not be English the first. So, as they call in, they can get in touch with somebody quickly and get a resolution quickly. All of our trucks have cameras on all four sides, including the hopper, which is the backpacker and the cab. So, we can see service as it's being performed. We can see service as it was performed. So, the reason why I say that is, is again, a resident may call and say that they missed my trash. But little Dan, as a child that went to school, was supposed to take out the trash Monday morning from my parents, forgot to, right? And then it's the trash company's fault for not picking up when really I know it was mine. Those cases do happen all the time. Generally, because we're here Thursday and Friday, we have a yard here. On Saturdays, if we have those, we come back and get that material because it's the right thing to do. But in that phone call, we can educate that person. And when they find out that we have the cameras and that we're not using it as a getcha, kind of, we're trying to use it as an education tool, those missed calls that are actually late sets dramatically drop down because they realize that we have that technology available. So, again, if anybody needs your phone numbers, it's 586-228-1200 and 855-927-8365.
I will also add that if they call DPW, we will call Priority for them. So, we, of course, violating the speakers here as well.
Yeah, we get, we get some, have some time. You say the truck, they have camera in the truck.
Correct, yes.
Yeah. A lot of times, the people working with the truck, they broke the trash can. If they didn't have the house camera, they can put it back. If you have the camera from the house, because the people, when they, after when they throw it, they, they broke the trash can. We tell them, yeah, we just called, the trash can is broke. From the people, they said, how they gonna be the proof? They have to have proof from the house camera. A lot of people, they didn't have camera from the house. That's one reason. A second reason, many time when they say, or they got some left mattress or cabinet, we call them to come take it out. Sometime they came, sometime not. After two days, three days, they called enforcement, they make him a ticket.
That's all I was going to say, that we need to have a communication.
Yeah. After two, three days, called enforcement, they walking around, they give him a ticket. How we gonna fix this issue?
So, so we have significantly diminished that.
I mean, a lot of times now, I mean, we even send our DPW out. Sometimes they just grab stuff, you know, between us and Priority. I mean, I, unless it's like a gross, like someone is just like completely out of line and just throwing stuff and making a mess in the alley, we're not really tagging people for that unless it's just a problem at this point. And, and of course, you know, Councilman, if, if you guys come across stuff, send them to me. We'll address it. Priority has been really good as, as he stated about coming back out and grabbing stuff. We're not in the business of wanting to write people tickets. We're in the business of trying to, you know, help our residents and, and that's what we're doing. So, if, if we're writing tickets, it's because there's, there's, there's a problem at this point.
Okay, how about the trash can? When they, the people, they got, the people working with the trash can.
So, by the nature of the business. So, by the nature of the business, I mean, these things are, you know, they get full. They throw them around. I mean, they're, you know, they only last so long. I mean, you know, they do damage them. Anytime a resident has come to me, to their credit, you know, they ran out and replaced them. You know, I'm not saying they can do that across the board and replace all the garbage cans in the city. But anytime I've called him and said, hey, this resident has said you guys broke this, whether they did or not, and they got the cameras to show that they did, they usually just replace them.
They have some, a lot of people, they have some arguments when they have proof from his house camera. But a lot of people, they didn't have camera from his in the back house. How they gonna make the proof?
Well, they, they have the cameras on the trucks.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's why we need to ask him for that one.
He's saying that when they called Priority Waste, Priority Waste is telling the resident, do you have proof?
Yes.
And he's saying if the trucks have cameras already, why do they need a camera on their house to prove it? When the trucks have cameras, prove it yourself, sort of, right?
So, I, I can't answer to that particular case and I don't know when, when was at, at that moment, in that day or that, that year. So, what I can say is, is that the cameras now in the city have, or, sorry, the trucks now in the city have these cameras available. That may have been prior to us installing cameras. That may have been where we just had the safety cameras for, for the in-cab insurance type of situations, distracted driving, that we, everybody has those. But yes, if there is a case in which there's a concern of, of the cart, we will replace it, especially if we did damage. As part of the contract, we have that relationship with the city administrator that if something comes through that needs to be taken care of, we generally step up and take care of it, understanding that we don't wanna be taken advantage of as well. And I hope you can understand that. But yes, I don't know that case. I apologize if it was in a timeframe in which we had a camera. Could have been a rental vehicle that we used because maintenance doesn't happen. Trucks break down and we have to use rentals that don't have the cameras. But yes, of course, if you have those concerns, I know Max has shared those with us, when they come to Ham and we, like I said, usually step up and take care of it.
When did the cameras go live? I don't.
The cameras in, in Hamtramck's vehicles went live about two years ago or so.
Mr. Chair, I have the few cases like that. Actually, city manager did very good. So, we don't, we don't have to go that far. Just come to the city, tell them, hey, this is happened. You reached out this time and this is the proof. And he did three of us. I have a three case and he sent them yours.
He did for you?
No, not for me.
He did for you, but I can read time. Yeah, I can read time. If I didn't have proof from the house, nobody did.
Well, there's another reason. Some of them, if I had to say, I have to say proof. Some of them hiding that from taking from this house to the other house. Then this house complaining about someone taking.
Mr. Mayor, you're getting too dear.
No, no, no. When you open the issue, you have to be clear with that issue. Yes, if it is damaged by the company, damaged by them, come to the city hall, talk to the John and Max. If they don't replace, come to us. I will make that happen. Make sure you can, and we'll be 24 hours by your house. Thank you.
All right, thank you. And that's what the city manager just said. If there's any complaints, bring it up to the city manager. I think it's, it only happens once in a while, so we can always take care of that. I think we are done with discussion. Can vote?
Can. Councilman Hassan.
Yes.
Councilman Musa.
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud.
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 2024-53 approved.
Thank you. The next one is Resolution 2024-54, approving lease agreement with Detroit Machinery Center.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, we're just gonna keep John up there for a while. So, this is our DPW yard that is actually in Detroit still that we intend to eventually move away from. Unfortunately, we aren't yet to that point and we won't be for a couple of years. As Council knows, we still have a long way to go. We still have a lot of planning to do. We still have acquisitions to do. We still have architects to do, architectural drawings to do. We still have grants to get. So, until that all comes to fruition, we still need to maintain this. So, John has negotiated a fair lease agreement for this building moving forward. If there's anything I missed, John, feel free to add.
No, the pricing we're getting for that size of a building and for how much space we're actually using is really incredible. But the building we have there is massive and, as you know, you guys have proved a lot of, everything I've asked for, so all that stuff needs a house. And it needs to be covered, especially the jet truck and the sweepers. It has water, you can't put it outside, it's gonna freeze and blow up like the last one the city owned. So, everything's kept indoors. Plus, we have the new DPW, hopefully gonna be the yard out there. We have that garage full. So, we, we're filling it up. And I had a chance to take him here out there, just show him around how big and he was, he was shocked. He's like, this place is huge for how much money we're actually spending. It's a really good, I think it's a really good deal. Price would have been a lot higher, but since I went three years, they dropped, they agreed to do it for the $2,900. And I figured either if we started next year on a new building, should we get money? It's still gonna take a few, good few years before we can utilize the building. So, I thought this was a safe, safe amount of time to go for.
Okay, and are we working on getting any rent for this building? Are we trying?
Always looking for money. I like to spend it, so I'm looking for it.
We still have a few more land things to work through, so. We still have a few more land things to work through, so I would prefer to talk offline on that.
Okay. All right. Any further discussion? All right, we can go ahead and vote.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan? Mr. Mayor, resolution 202454 approved.
Thank you.
And John has the next seven resolutions as well.
All right, the next one is resolution 202455, approving the proposed contract extension agreement with HydroCorp.
Second.
Mr. Mayor, I'm not gonna pretend like I haven't much understanding of this resolution, but thankfully John does. So HydroCorp provide, they've been providing services here for over 15 years. They're basically the agency that goes out to a lot of the commercial buildings, and does a cross contamination connection inspection to make sure the sewage is not mixing with our drinking water. It's mandated by the state. This contract was extended in the past. So it's, by extending it again, we're talking about a six-year term that's been extended. The increase is very minimal, like two grand, which is unbelievably low. Why I like HydroCorp is we have, they have the historical knowledge of what buildings they have access to, especially being that there's many cultures here, which takes a long time to build up that database, to be able to call somebody up, go there to be able to inspect it. And then we bring in somebody new, so a lot longer process, might not make the mandate at the time, and these inspections have to be done by. I also talked to them about doing our water sampling for us, because we spent, with the former employee we had here, that's no longer with us, about half of his salary was spent, basically just collecting water samples, in total about $60,000 a year. After meeting with HydroCorp, since they're already making phone calls, I was able to utilize them to also do our water sampling for us. Now you're now required to do 60 samples twice a year, that's gonna be shooting down probably to 30, once we show we're passed. We passed the last few tests, and once we pass it again, we can go back down to 30 samples. So they're doing that service for under 10 grand, we're spending about 60. And should we go from 60 samples down to 30, it's gonna be less than that, half of that. And they're also paying for the testing. So before, we were spending $60,000 to have this done, and they're doing the test now, and they're paying to have the testing. So this was a win-win, and they were able to work with, work somehow with me on that to get this done, so I think this is, this is a home run for sure.
So how much money did that cost us?
I think it was $31,000, $31,416 for the next two years, and they were at about 29, 28, 7 before, so a couple thousand dollars more. But they didn't increase the last time there, so they're really have only gone up $2,000 in six years, when I looked at the previous contracts, which is way below what most of the contracts have been going up. Plus, they're able to do this new service that I talked to them about, to save the city a lot more money going forward on the sampling.
We can go ahead and vote.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 202455 approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution 202456, approving award of 2024 earmark water main replacement.
Mr. Mayor, I have John up here to proceed with this one, and the next six, and I have John Hennessy to assist. Before we get in there, good evening, mayor and council. The next six resolutions deal with the $10 million that we got in the grant for the earmark, and then the $15 million that we got for the ARPA funds. So all six of these resolutions are 100% grant funded, just to let the mayor and council and the public know.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, councilman.
Thank you, Mr. Hennessy, that's why we can save a little time. So the one question, honest question, honest counsel, the B process through, you guys going through the B. So the one question in general, six of them, why is the one company?
Three, three bits.
Three or one or more.
There's two different.
There's three companies. There's three bids, so there were, if I could.
No, no, I'm just saving time. So if we have, we trust you guys. If you guys think it's done properly, professionally, and there is no bidder can bid what we have in, that case, I don't have no issue, I'm gonna be, I'll throw yes and yes. And also, I don't, and also it has to take that responsibility, in case anything happened later on, about this company did it, and it is, is not done by you guys.
Certainly, and we've had our meeting, these, all three of these projects were publicly bid, we had three bidders on one, we had five in another, and a six in another. And so two, two contracts were won by the same company, they're in the same area, they're in the northeast area of the community, and, and then a third company won, it was in the southwest portion of the city. So thank you.
Can I just make one comment? Because these two projects, or all of these projects are grant funded, so we have to make sure that we go through all the process that are required under the federal grant funding requirements. So all the purchasing, everything has to abide by very strict federal, you know, rules and regulations, because none of our reimbursements would be approved if we don't go through a very transparent and very elaborate process of grant funding and, you know, approvals.
But that's why we said.
Yeah.
Again, even though they're money, we have to oversee that.
Right, certainly.
That's why I'm saying, if the blame comes, it has to come to us. Someone give us money, I have to use property, I don't want it, so let that go, go.
Oh, no.
We don't want that kind of thing. I can't leave it.
This was all split up and independently bid, and.
Just one clarification, the reason why you're seeing seven, eight different resolutions is to make sure that, you know, we are following the right process, instead of, you know, combining everything into one resolution.
What is the total fund?
The total amount of funds that we're getting is 25 million, 10 million in earmark, and then 15 million in ARPA funds, and it's distributed amongst water main replacement, and then lead service lead lines replacements. Those will come to you shortly. We wanted to do is bid out the water main work, which is the heavy, heavy lifting, so to speak, and then we'll know how much money we have left to spend on the water, on the lead service leads replacements. And to Amir's point, Eagle is heavily involved, I can tell you, the city manager, Amir, John, and I, we received multiple emails from Eagle, I, I would say no less than 10 a day, about our, the process, just to make sure that we're adhering to all the requirements that they've put upon us for the, as the grant recipient.
I hope you guys stay before, during, and after the job.
Oh, yes. That's a part of the requirements that we're doing through there.
Plus, they come out.
Yes, Eagle comes out and.
Yeah, they come out and inspect the project.
Is it gonna cover whole city of Brooklyn, or?
No, this is, this is, this will just cover whatever we can do in that 25 million.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea how many persons?
John has the area.
Yeah. Each resolution is broken down, which streets this is covered.
The one that we're talking about right now is Lumpkin, Lumpkin, from Hall Brook all the way down to Denton and Grayling. So those are three streets on this.
Fully covered? No street is fully covered?
Yes, those streets will be completely covered. All new water mains, all new lead service leads going into the house, per Eagle's requirements.
But sometime, when they change the service line, after the hour and a month, when a rain is coming, before they don't have leak, for the new line, they can lift all the way down to the basement, from the new line, from the seafloor, when they open.
Councilman, inevitably, when you disturb ground, it changes the way things are settled. I mean, I mean, you can't, you can't put the ground perfectly the way back it is, and sometimes that is just gonna happen. He's saying that when we excavated it and put it back in, now the basement's leaking. But I mean.
A lot of them, we found, leak it before the final restoration is done, so it creates a soup bowl effect at the grade, so when it rains, all the water goes into the hole that's disturbed earth, it goes straight down. And if they don't have enough sealant around the pipe going through the wall, because we actually install the service lines through the wall, so that the meter is within three feet, soon as it enters the house, so sometimes they have to go out there and chip away and put the new sealant around the line coming in. I've gotten about maybe three or four total in the last year and a half, and we've always been able to rectify them, the ones that called.
They still, they still same, it's not three or four. Guess cover, we call many time, after when we put the new line, they didn't like dirt, they didn't put it down. When the rain is coming, they go straight up. They following the line to the basement.
I mean, councilman, I've dealt with some of those as well, and I've talked to a couple people, and at least the one that I talked to couldn't even tell me where it was coming from. He didn't know whether it was coming from the line or from the walls.
They didn't have leak before, they came a leak after the new line.
I, I know, but what I'm telling you is at least the person.
Or you can find out in the other, the leak. They came a leak after the new line.
We have to take every case on a case-by-case situation and look and see what's going on. I mean, of all the many, many, many service lines we're doing, it's inevitable that somebody's gonna have a leak. I mean, we're, we're, at the end of the day, doing 5,000, how many of these? We're doing 1,700 this year, we're trying. Saying in general, we're gonna be doing 5,000 of these in the city, so we're gonna do some.
They do 5,000, they do 10,000, they still same way. All of them, they get some cover, not a lot.
There's going to be, there's going to be some, there's gonna be some errors, there's gonna be some that leak, there's gonna be some problems. It's just gonna happen, it's construction.
They can't believe when they have a right.
And we will, on a case-by-case situation, they'll have to come to us, and we're gonna have to look at them individually and see what's gonna happen. And generally, councilman, if, if there's a leak, the contractor will be responsible for that leak, but the, the leak, and all of us know that water leaves a presence, we should be able to determine right from on the interior that we see a watermark through there.
When they put the dirt, when they put the dirt in the seafloor, after the rain, later, you see the dirt is coming down.
The ground.
And on is not.
The, the ground is settling.
They don't knock it down, the dirt.
And we will, we will come back and repair that. The contractor's under contract to repair that to grade through there. And sometimes, you're right, councilman, sometimes the trenches aren't very wide, so it's a little bit difficult for the contractor to pack the ground in as deep as it, as it can be, because the contractor's trying to be efficient in a sense for his own work to disrupt as little earth as possible. But if there's a settlement issue, we will come back and replace that at no cost to them, and generally, they will show up in the next season. All of these contracts that we have in front of us, mayor and council.
We hold back money.
Yeah, we hold back money, and we have a two-year maintenance and guarantee program through there. So we hold back our retainage until we close out the project through there. Councilman, anyone that comes to you, just bring them to us, and we will deal with them on an individual basis.
How many time I talk to you with this issue?
It depends what it is. Every one of them is, is a different situation, councilman. Sometimes, some, and I can't, I'm not, I'm not gonna be specific, but just in general, sometimes people come to me, and it's, they can't tell me anything, they just said, there's water here. Sometimes people are specific, and we help them, every situation's different.
I've gone out on three of them, and one of them was a waterproofing issue, one of them was their sump pump wasn't turned on, and the other one, the water came out of the floor drain out of the basement. But because somebody was there working on their home, they're not relating to it, they just think, oh, somebody was outside doing lead service lines, gotta be from that. But totally two different areas.
The last one I spoke to, I asked the person specifically, well, where's the water coming from? And they couldn't tell me even at all. They just said, well, I don't know if it's coming from here, or the walls, or the pipe, or anything. I said, well, tell me, when it rains, where it's coming from? If it's coming from any of the areas that we disturbed, we'll be back there to fix it? And never heard from them again. So I'm assuming it was not from anything we did.
As long as we replace the holes. We replace the holes, we cover the hole strongly, that's all you're responsible, that's it.
We're happy to go back on an individual basis and check, 100%, but I mean, we can't just assume that there's water in the basement, and it was something we did, because, I mean, let's face it, Hamtramck basements get water in them from many directions, whether it's, whether it's the coming back up from the sewer, leaking in from the walls, or, you know, pick your direction, it's coming in.
It's my case, because we have a lot of discussion.
Yeah, any specific incidents reported to the city manager, he will work on it with the Hennis Engineering. So any other discussions regarding this? We can go ahead and vote.
Thank you. Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 202456 approved.
Thank you. The next one is resolution 202457, approving award of 2024 earmark water main replacement construction services.
I need a motion.
Motion.
Second. Mr. Mayor, this resolution is just essentially for Hennessy to supervise the resolution you just approved, and that was dealing with the streets from Lumpkin, Denton, and Grayling.
All right, then we can go ahead and vote.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 202457 approved.
Thank you. Next one is resolution 202458, approving award of 2024 handbags water main replacement program.
Second. Mr. Mayor, this is Poland Comstock in Belmont, went out to competitive bid, we landed on a contractor that was the lowest bidder, we hope that you approve this.
Vote. Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 2458 approved.
Thank you. This one is resolution 202459, approving award of 2024 handbags water main replacement program construction services.
Tragedy of the most. Second. Mr. Mayor, this is the commanding resolution, the resolution you just passed for Poland Comstock in Belmont, for Hennessy to oversee the projects.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution 202459 approved.
Thank you. Resolution 202460, approving award of 2024 handbags water main replacement program.
Motion. Second. Mr. Mayor, this is Casimir and Comer Avenues, went out to competitive bid, landed on the lowest bidder, and we humbly request that you approve this contract.
Councilman Hassan?
You got the lowest bidder?
Yes, sir.
Sometime I want to extend my, you know.
Yes.
I said no.
Did you guys wanna discuss before you vote?
No, no.
Oh, no? You don't want lowest bidder? Okay. Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman Al Samiri?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, resolution, did you wanna discuss it? Mr. Mayor, resolution 202460 approved.
Thank you. Next one, resolution 202461, approving award of 2024 handbags water main replacement program construction services.
Second. Mr. Mayor, this is the commanding resolution, the resolution that was just passed, dealing with Casimir and Comer Avenues, for Hennessy Engineering to oversee the project. Humbly ask you to approve this.
Councilman Mahmoud?
And before we vote, since this is the last one, we talked before about the process after replacing the lead pipe, leaving the street in a horrible shape is something unacceptable, like, like Kinnit.
Sure.
I mean, every residence I meet, first question is, what happened to Kinnit? We tried to put some, you know, we discussed this with city manager. They went back and they put some patching on the holes that they were there. But they, it's, it's elevated instead of, you know, the same holes that was there, now it's, it's high. So the same problem continues. I think we are working on the street to repave it next month, you know, soon. We have the bid on June 6th, 7th maybe? And then we'll replace the whole street. But residents have been suffering for the past three months and it's, it's, that's just one example. There are other streets, so please, after you finish doing the infrastructure underground, make sure you leave the street in a very good shape because residents don't know what happened underground. They don't care. They don't appreciate what you did underground. They care about what affects their vehicles and, you know, that how comfortable they drive on the streets.
Even the sidewalk too.
Yeah, and, and the sidewalks as well. So please put more efforts to things that affect residents directly.
We made a slight change, like St. Albans gonna start next month on the 56th.
Yes.
We're only doing one block at a time. I'm not having them take the whole stretch all at once. So we're just gonna have them do the one, wrap that up, finish it, move, move on to the next street to try to alleviate some of that.
Change some of the operational components.
When you start the Kinnit?
Kinnit should be late jump.
The bids are open per MDOT schedules, MDOT funders who are under their schedule. Bids are due on June 7th. And we're looking, then we're looking to have a contract signed with the contractor within 30 days.
It's been a bit...
As soon as possible.
Take the most of the drains from there. I agree with Mr. Mayor. So we have to take, when the recovery passed and it is significantly, if you blow it right now and go, and it's gonna go down after a couple of days. So you have to be busy to put the debris again to make it even because right after you open the Kinnit, I draw, I don't wanna drive my new car.
Unfortunately, on that one, we had to open it twice because I found out they weren't putting the right torque. So we had to re-dig them up, made the contractor come back, put them at the correct torque.
At the contractor's expense.
At the contractor's expense.
Again, if you fill the hole, you're not gonna be here quick with him one day. It's not gonna be doing...
Yeah.
Or it's nearly time to ease up. It takes a lot of cargo up there and anyone's left. So we wanna make sure we can help.
All right, thank you so much. We can vote on this one.
Councilman Hassan?
Yes.
Councilman Musa?
Yes.
Councilman Mahmoud?
Yes.
Councilman El Samiri?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Mayor, Resolution 202461 approved.
Thank you. And that will be the last one. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Yeah, we have the report now, in five minutes.
No, you can, this will go. So you can start.
Councilman, he doesn't wanna hear my report, so...
So, I mean, I don't have anything to say. I just wanna mention that yesterday, City Hall was closed, but we were here. We had a special guest. He was traveling yesterday, so we had to host him yesterday here in the City Hall because after the weekend, we only had a chance. Yesterday, he was the, he was a member of the Yemeni parliament for three terms. Then he served as the Minister of Media in Yemen. And then his last position was the Ambassador of Yemen and Jordan. He was visiting our city over the weekend and so we hosted him here in the City Hall. Recognized him. We awarded him a certificate of appreciation and recognition for coming to visit our city. And I had, it was a quick visit for like 15 minutes. So I didn't want to disturb the council members in the day, which is holiday. Only the people who were nearby joined us for like 15 minutes and he had to head to the airport. So that was one of the activities we had last, yesterday. Before that, I was in North Carolina for three days. I was invited to an event there and a wedding of one of my relatives. So it was a nice trip, good weather there as well and got to know a lot of people in there. There's a big Yemeni community in North Carolina, I didn't know that. Other than that, I mean, nothing else to say. I wanna thank again Mr. Bill Meyer and his team on working on the resolution to boycott the companies that support Israel. And I wanna thank the city council members, all of them, for supporting this resolution and for their comments and regarding this issue. I wanna thank everyone who came to tonight's meeting. And that's all basically for my report. And we can move to the report of Mr. Mayor Portman.
Good evening. Thank you very much for coming to this morning, this evening. I have to read one of the letter for the Hindi community. They have prepared parade for the, their event. I just wrote the letter for this. This is the motion that on behalf of the Hindu people from Belmont Street, I am sending you the event application and roadmap. The event is for July 7th, 2024, Sunday, from 5:00 p.m. to 7:00 p.m. We are planning to arrange a Hindu religious rally serving the spacious function of Arat Yatra. We will start at the corner of Belmont and Galaga Street. We'll take a small road at the Yemen Street and end of the location. We might stop the City Hall parking for 10 minutes to make a few thank you speech for the event planners. We are expecting around 1,200 participants and the whole event should not take more than two hours. You, Special Mayor, you board, City Council and Mayor, you guys are welcome for this event. Thank you again to bring the resolution for police rise, this resolution and we pass this thing. I hope it is a significant resolution. Whole world are gonna be watching for those things and whole nation also. And thank you again. Our police chief, it's the first time, first times we met on the official city council meeting. Wish you good luck and I want it to be everything is a room to improve. I hope you improve your service and make us higher level in the community too. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And that's a very good point that we forgot. We would like to welcome Chief Corr. His first meeting with us and I wish you good luck, newer, new task to serve our community. I also wanna mention that tomorrow I have a special event, graduation of my daughter from high school. So I will be speaking at that as well. She has been here two years. She did three school years in those two years. And she finished, she maintained 4.0. She got multiple scholarship to escape, so I'm very proud of her. And I will be speaking on their graduation. City council members?
Mr. Mayor, congratulations to Police Chief. You know, as Mr. Mayor brought you and say, there's always room for improvement. Even the city of Hamtramck, renowned police department, you know, they're doing a great job, but always, you know, community looking for more. And hopefully your leadership will make some new changes to the, or improve the service of the city that people appreciate your and welcome your work in our community. I wanna thank you to DPS and City Manager. Yesterday, you know, it was a holiday, but when I sent an email about the flooding on Shoreview, I was taking care right away. So, but we needed, we need to have a permanent solution. I mean, everything's taking too long. We've been saying yes, yes, yes to every resolution, every meeting, trying to get things moved faster, but things not getting done look like, a lot of things just holding back. Even though the camera is supposed to be installed already, it's been six or eight months maybe for the...
Flood?
Yes.
They're in?
Yeah.
I mean, they're not completely in, but a lot of them are.
My...
They're in. I think there's still a few that need to be...
Okay, that's good. So that's one good accomplishment. But everything else, good, thank you. Thanks, everybody.
All right, thank you. Any other council member? No more reports? Do you have anything for the controller or City Manager?
Yeah, there is a report.
We just basically put them on their mayor so that they were, they're towards there.
All right, thank you. So we move back to public comment.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mark Corai? Corey? I heard you say, is it Corai or Corey?
Corey.
Corey?
Yours Farage.
It's Farage.
Just wanna say thank you for everybody for today. It was a, it was a good day for everybody. I can thank the people I met, Matt Clark, who actually did a lot of work in drafting this, helped out. Bill Meyer, who was a lot of their force in doing this for Michigan Peace Council. There was also, today we have Dr. Jaboor, who I, I've never personally, I know him as a representative of the community though. It's the first time I've met him in person. I didn't know he was Palestinian just because I saw him today. But he should, he'll be speaking here today. But it was a good night to have this, this particular, I am passive, but I wanna get a signed copy, signed by the clerk so we can, I can send out to everybody because what we accomplished here, I think, is very important. And it'll probably be big national news in a very short period. So just again, for all of you who voted for us, thank you very much for coming up and showing, supporting us. Because I had, I had a lot of doubts it was gonna pass. Because the problems we had in our, we're trying to get this passed for like last 15 years, hasn't gone through. So I figured it's gonna be fought tooth and nail, but there was no opposition. So it was really a, a good day today. So thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Bill Meyer, do you wanna wait a minute?
Yeah, I'll come up. I think so. So obviously, I wanna thank everybody for your manhood and support of this and also our city manager who helped put this on the agenda and everybody else who supports it. This is so nice that this historic event took place on the first day that our new chief of police came here from New York. I'm gonna give my time, I'm not gonna say anymore. I wanna give my time to two distinguished Palestinian guests who are here who cannot make any time to speak before the early public comments. Hassan Nuwash is a well-known Palestinian activist in the community. He had Palestine office for many years. Everybody knows Hassan Nuwash. And after him, we have the amazing Dr. Nadal Jaboor, who founded the Doctors Against Genocide. And he's been speaking at many rallies. These two people are very important people in the Palestinian community. And I'm so glad they came to talk to you and thank you. So I'll give my time to Hassan Nuwash.
Thank you.
Welcome, Hassan.
Thank you. Greetings and much appreciation, heartily appreciation to the mayor and the esteemed council for having you passed, passed this historic resolution. You are not in the minority. 143 nations in the UN recognized the need for Palestine to be an equal member of the United Nations. Now it is still an observing member. And only Israel and the United States are the ones that have opposed to this. So, and the entire world now is on the side of Palestinians. So you are again in the cusp of leadership of where things have to be, given the genocide that our people are facing in Palestine, not only in Gaza, most severe in the Gaza Strip, but also in the rest of Palestine, in Abyss, Jenin, Jerusalem, Hebrew, et cetera. So thus, not only I appreciate you and your leadership, but you are going to be the model city for which to be followed by other cities that are still hesitant to be supportive of Palestinians. We have gone through the question of ceasefire resolutions in cities. Hamtramck was in the leadership as well and a lot of other cities followed. I just came through last weekend. I hope I'm not over, over time, I will end right now.
You have one minute left.
I'm... Thank you, I appreciate it. The, I just attended, participated in 3,000 registrant conference of youth, Palestinian youth conference in Cobal, I mean, it used to be Cobal Hall. And if the energy was unbelievable, it's just like, you know, it actually trumps the entire, the entire expectations by Ben-Gurion, the person who established Israel, that people, old people will die and young people will forget. Guess what? 3,000 people with all kinds of energy, unbelievable, resolving to continue the fight for Palestinian freedom and return. Thank you very much again for your leadership.
Thank you, Hassan. Dr. Nadal Jaboor?
Yeah, thank you for allowing me to be here. Do you hear me good?
Yes.
Yeah, my name is Dr. Nadal Jaboor. I'm a co-founder of the organization Doctors Against Genocide. I'm a Palestinian and as a Palestinian, we want to thank you from the deepest of our souls to the mayor of the city of Hamtramck, Mr. Amir Galib, and to the dignified city council members for being the third city in the nation to pass a divestment resolution against the genocidal criminal regime of Israel. As a doctor, I wanna thank you too for doing all you can to protect humanity and to protect human lives. As an American, I wanna thank you for trying your best and taking the lead on helping America being on the right side of history, despite the intentional criminal intent of President Joseph Biden, Secretary of State Antony Blinken and Lloyd Austin. Our organization, we are the medical experts on genocide. We think that Israel has been committing genocide against the Palestinian people for the last century. I consider myself to be a genocide survivor. This genocide has always been supported by the West and by the United States. Israel enjoyed the impunity for this genocide for the last century and that's why they keep doing it. And as long as they are held accountable, they will continue to do so. Unfortunately, the United States is not just complicit and aiding and abetting the genocide. At this point, we think war criminal Joseph Biden, war criminal Antony Blinken, war criminal Lloyd Austin are full partners in this genocide. At Doctors Against the Genocide, we call on the International Criminal Court to issue an immediate arrest warrant against President War Criminal Joseph Biden, Antony Blinken and Lloyd Austin for committing war crimes, along with war criminals Netanyahu, Bing, Veil, Gallant and Smotrich. These people are a danger to humanity. They are war criminals on the loose. They need to be arrested effective immediately to protect the lives of children and humanity. We hope the ICC hears our call. The children and the humanity of the world is at risk as long as these war criminals are on the loose. We think Joseph Biden deserves his legacy to go down history as a war criminal along the age of Hitler, Stalin, Volpa...
Do you wanna ask the mayor for an extra minute?
One more minute.
Thank you.
So war criminal Joseph Biden, you deserve this legacy. You should not be going for a re-election. You should be at the head being tried for genocide and for war crimes. Thank you, Hamtramck, for trying to make America great for the first time. Because America has never been great. It committed genocide against the natives, it enslaved the blacks and it is you guys who are trying to make it great for the first time. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Mayor, the teleprompter come up?
Mr. Mayor, two seconds.
There's apps called No Thanks. If people wanna download this and scan when they're purchasing something, they'll tell you if you wanna buy it or not. It's called No Thanks. So like Israeli product, wanna buy it? When you're purchasing something, if you scan it, it'll tell you it's made, what it's made from. No thanks.
All right, thank you. All right, we, with that, we come to the end of our meeting for tonight. Thank you, everyone, for joining us today and we call to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Lot of favor?
8:44?
8:44.
We just said it, I'm sorry, we adjourned our meeting.
You can, you can talk to us.
You can, you can talk to us. You can.